And so that's a.
Good Lord, what'd you do over here?
Exploded.
I'm gonna call the regular meeting of this Planning Commission, the City of Chattahoochee Hills, to order. This is the Thursday, May 15th, 2025, regular meeting. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States, to the Republic, for which it stands.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight. Does anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda they want to suggest? If not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The agenda is approved. The second item is the approval of the minutes for the April 16th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. And Ms. Searle, I believe you have a suggestion for it?
Yes, I wanted to suggest that we add the mayor head minister, the oath of office, to two new appointees, Lori Searle and Reginald Wilburn Jr., and then list the other members by name who were reappointed by Mayor Reed.
Now Diane, I think you have added some language already to it. Is that correct?
Yes, but I'll make that change. I'll put the names.
Okay, why don't you, all right, is there any objection to that change? Then with that change, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. No one says no. We'll move to the first public hearing tonight. And this is the recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone 273.89 acres from RL to HMMU, which is rural to mixed deuce hamlet. The property is four parcels at the corner of Rico Road and Vernon Grove Road. This is a matter that has been before this committee, before the commission, before. And we have received the information that has been requested in large measure. And so I'm going to go ahead and read the procedures for the public hearing. These are the same procedures we have for our public hearings consistently. The chair will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for this public hearing. You desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card, one of the yellow cards, and turn it in to the city clerk, Ms. Wilson. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. In this case, well, let's see, how many comment cards do we have, Ms. White?
We have five cards for item number one and one written statement, and we have two for item number two.
Okay, so for item number one, we have five comments. So let's put the time limit at 20 minutes. Is that all right with everyone initially? We need to, we'll add. So the time limits are going to be, each side will have 20 minutes. That means those supporting and those opposing. And each, all, the applicant may take as much of the allotted time for those supporting the issue as he or she may want. All others speaking in support of or in opposition shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. We can extend the allotted time for each side on an equal basis as needed. All of those speaking in support of the item will speak first. The applicant may or choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue will speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Written comments in support of the issue, and we do have some, will be read out loud if time remains after all others present at the hearing supporting the issue have spoken, and the same for the those opposing. Following the presentation by the applicant, those speaking in support of the application, those opposing the application, the city staff shall present its position. The city clerk will keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time is expired. During the public hearing, members of the Planning Commission shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the chair declares the public hearing or the public comment period complete. Following public comment, the Planning Commission chair should close the public comment portion and seek discussion in our motion to act upon the proposal. Although you don't need to present your position, Mike, I think it might be helpful if you want to introduce this briefly. We've heard this before, but it may be appropriate to make a brief presentation of this, of this item.
Thank you.
Just a brief, and you don't need to submit your.
So this is 274 acres on Rico Road at the corner with Vernon Grove Road. The proposal is for 274 residential units, along with some commercial. Some of the residential are, they're almost all single-family and townhome units. There's a small number that's planned for upper levels of those, of those commercial buildings. The plan meets the requirements for open space and buffers and, and density. And we spoke in the work session about the divided nature of the plan. There are 20 proposed lots on the north side of Rico Road, the balance on the south side, three entrances total in the, in the, in the plan, two on the south side, one of them on Vernon Grove Road, which is a, an unpaved road. And because it's an unpaved road and our rules on unpaved roads, there's a condition proposed that would allow that to only be for emergency access. And then finally, there's one entrance proposed on the north side to serve the 20 proposed lots on the north side. Again, we had a discussion there on what might happen on the north side, get into later.
It's fine. We'll go ahead and open the public comment period of this. The applicant, if he would like to, you may make a presentation at this point for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Thank you for your attention and collaboration in this multi-month process. I think this is our fourth meeting of being before you. As you know, we, at your recommendation, got a parking study, or excuse me, a traffic study conducted that was very intentional about the time and methods used to make sure that it is accurate and has an accurate portrayal of the conditions of the traffic in the surrounding area. And as you know, if it's appropriate, if anyone has any questions, at the end, Mr. Victor Garcia, who's the traffic engineer who did the study, is available on Zoom to answer any particular questions. And we know that some of those were addressed in the work session, but if you have any additional questions or clarity on anything, he is available. We thank you to Commissioner Searle for being at the, at the public meeting, along with several others of you, but her notes are, I think, accurate, a portrayal of what happened at the last community meeting, and was helpful to provide feedback to the applicant to make some adjustments, I think, to make the plan better. And I think that's what this process has done, is we have been through this and refined our plan based on feedback, based on legitimate concerns, that some of which we could have an effect to make a better proposed plan, which I think is going to be in the best interest of the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. See, we also have Tom Walsh, who's our land planner, available on Zoom as well for any additional questions or expertise. He's very familiar with the city code and think that he would tell you that this plan doesn't need any variances, that it's within the design of the city of Chattahoochee Hills. It's conforms with the comprehensive plan. It is what is envisioned by the formation of Chattahoochee Hills and curbing urban sprawl and providing areas of good planning with housing, places to live, and, and for neighborhood shopping for, for folks in the community. So Mr. Walsh is available on Zoom as well. Staff, thank you to Mr. Morton for all his time, many hours, talking, emailing with me and going through this process, as he always does, work, work very hard. And we are grateful for his recommend, or the staff's recommendation, entirety of the staff who looked at this, others who are, who are not here tonight, that also played a critical role. And, and they have, they have recommended what we think are reasonable conditions that will make the development better. So as we discussed in the work session, based on the feedback that we've gotten at the community meeting and from, from you at large, the applicant is open to the condition of shifting the development for the 40, on the 40 acres to the north of Rico Road, shifting those units south. That is, that, that is a, I think, a good faith concession if the condition is made to make this better in terms of overall walkability and the design of what a hamlet is supposed to be. And finally, I do want to address the, the one letter that was sent in, what is the, what are the benefits to the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills? And really, there are, there are three. And one I've already touched on, and that is the reducing urban sprawl. This is a good development for Chattahoochee Hills. That's going to be a responsible development that will ensure that we don't have urban sprawl, that we've got good buffers that protect the visibility to make sure this is a, just aesthetically, a good-looking development. And from the road, primarily, you'll see vegetation. And secondly, it preserves the 70% of the area as green space of the 274 acres. The vast majority, 70%, will be green space. And then finally, it offers some neighborhood mom and pop, commercial shopping, whether it be to go in and get a sandwich, or, you know, some, some service for the residents so that they don't have to drive 25 or 30 minutes elsewhere. It's be something that is convenient and, and beneficial to the residents. So with that, we will reserve the remainder of our time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. White, are there any commenters? If you have a yellow card, would you please give it to Ms. White? Are there any commenters in support of this?
No, sir.
Then let's go ahead and start the commenters in opposition.
The first person is Richard Dandy.
My name is Richard Dandy. I live at the corner of Vernon Grove and Rico Road, at 7780 Vernon Grove Road. I am strongly opposed to this plan. I hear a lot of going back and forth. I'm really kind of confused that, you know, I hear a lot of back and forth, you know, kind of getting into minutia about this and that, the, the fine points. It almost sounds like this is almost a done deal. You're just trying to work out the fine points and trying to figure out, you know, how to put the lipstick on the pig. You know, I, I don't know, you know, what else I can say, other than that this, this is the wrong plan, the wrong, the wrong location. I, I hear the applicant talking about, you know, suburban sprawl. Well, I guess their idea is just to make it all into one big fat watermelon and put it all together and make it look nice and pretty and surround it with trees. Well, I don't care what you surround it with. If you build a three-story condo, it's still a three-story condo. You know, I just, and, and I did hear you say about the second entrance, which is on Vernon Grove, which is, the second entrance is basically going to come out right at the edge of my property line and my neighbors. You said that they couldn't, you know, something to the effect that since it was a dirt road, what, what in the future would keep you from deciding, okay, well, we're going to pave this road? And then all of a sudden, it's a second answer. You know, I, I just, there's, there's so many things wrong with, with this idea. It doesn't look anything like anything around. If you look around Chattahoochee Hills, there's nothing around here that looks like that. I'm, you know, I'm not against progress, but I mean, the right kind of progress. And this is, is the wrong plan, wrong location. And, you know, I, I did have a question about the sewer. You know, waterline, they can run the waterline a long dang way. I don't know how, where the sewer is coming from. I assume if they're going to have water, that means they're going to have fire hydrants and everything else, which, you know, that's a good thing for the fire department. I wonder about the sewer. And he talked about maybe sewage. Well, that's a whole nother issue. I wonder, you know, I don't know if there's been any EPA studies or, you know, I, you know, I wonder about the wildlife. There's just, there's so many questions that, you know, that, that need to be answered, you know, but I just, I think, I think that we're wasting an awful lot of time and energy on details. And either, either you, you need to decide this, is this the right fit for this community, or is it not? That's the bottom line. You know, we, we can go, this could go on for two, three years, trying to decide, you know, where this is going to be, where that's going to be. You know, that's, you need to decide, is it right or is it wrong? In my eyes, it's wrong. But I rest my case.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Ken Hearn.
Ken Hearn, 8525, Burn Road, Chad Hills. My family owns the 70 acres adjacent to this development, this proposed development. We've owned it for 81 years on Vernon Grove Road, and we are deeply troubled by the lack of communication and transparency surrounding this significant development. Despite requests from the city council and mayor for the developer to engage with affected landowners, we have received absolutely no contact whatsoever, nothing whatsoever. And we're adjacent to this development. This complete absence of communication fuels serious apprehension about the developer's true intentions and raises questions about the project's viability and overall impact on our community. The prolonged lack of detailed plans, preliminary studies, or even conceptual plans is equally unsettling. The absence of publicly available information leaves us significant unanswered questions about the scale, density, and potential environmental consequences of this proposed apartment, housing, commercial development. The fear that the city faces potential litigation if the rezoning is denied is frankly unacceptable. Yielding to such pressure would set a dangerous precedent, encouraging developers to prioritize profit over the preservation of our city's unique rural character and the well-being of its residents. As we continue to face proposals for expansion and development, it's important to reflect on what makes our city special and why protecting our rural way of life is in everyone's best interest. Preserving farmland, open spaces, and natural habitats ensures we maintain the local ecosystems that support wildlife, clean air, and water. Once land is developed, it is rarely restored to its original state. By keeping our area rural, we also help protect these resources for future generations. Additionally, rural communities often, often have lower, rural communities have lower crime rates, less, less traffic congestion, and a stronger sense of community identity. Growth and development, while sometimes necessary, can bring increased property taxes, infrastructure strain, and a shift in our city's character that many of us are not ready or willing to sacrifice. This isn't about resisting change, but about thoughtful planning. Growth can be balanced and sustainable without compromising the values and charms that make our community home. Let's work together.
Your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please.
Next person is Herman Hudson.
My name is Herman Hudson. I live at 76.
Speak in the microphone, please.
My name is Herman Hudson. I live at 7620 Hopkins Road, Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia. So I was looking over the, the original application that was on the city's website from Rico Investments. And on page 28 of Rico Investment LLC's application for rezoning, under endangered species, it states, "No known vegetative or wildlife species exist on the subject property, or confirmed Georgia Department of Natural Resources areas exist within the subject property." Well, the second half of that statement is just, is simply not true. According to the Georgia DNR, there are 21 species in Fulton County that are subject to various levels of threats. This could be found on georgabiodiversity.org, because I only have three minutes, not enough time to go through all those. There are three species, two animals, and one plant that are on the species of greatest conservation need within Palmetto, Georgia. I think DNR might not differentiate between Palmetto and Chat Hills. And you'll see that when you go to the website, and you can zero in actually on the counties and the cities and so on. Regardless, there is no evidence presented in Rico Investment LLC's application that made any effort to explore whether threatened species might reside on the Rico Road land. Given that the land has not been disturbed by humans in many years, there's a high probability that threatened species reside there. I know for a fact there's a bald eagle family living on or near this land, because I've seen one of the pair earlier this year. And you go to innaturalist.org, you can actually see the, those, that, that pair of eagles here in, in Chattahoochee Hills. Those people record that information with their phone and then upload it to innatural.org. So I think because of that defect in the, the application, someone needs to go back and re-review this application and get them to show you where they've done what they said they did. It just says no known. But if you don't look into something, how are you going to know whether there's one there or not? So that was basically what my concern was on this particular meeting, was the, was the lack of, you know, proving whether there were any endangered species on there. But I wanted to go back to, in my 39 seconds left, one of the things the fellow was saying earlier, to, to add to his, you know, this is one of the last areas of Fulton County where hunting is still allowed. The demarcation line is up there where Publix is. I think that's Highway 92, Hamilton Fairman Road. That's the point at which you're no longer allowed to, to hunt. So down here in Chattahoochee Hills, there's still, you know, areas to do that. And that's, that's pretty rare. That's part of, you know, I don't do it, but there are a lot of people who live here who do do it, because I hear them when they're out there hunting. So that's another thing to, to keep in mind that needs to be preserved. Thank you.
Next speaker is Betty Ferdinand.
For the fourth time, Betty Ferdinand, 10985 Hutchinson Ferry Road. What's the rush? Is it because their council member's terms ending, and this is the last chance to rush this through? Why else rescind the moratorium before constructive work could be done? I'm sure there are other petitions to push through. Lack of preparation, no sewer, no water, no timetable for either, and no support from the most effective community. Why would a city touting preservation think it's okay to place over 200 structures and infrastructure on such unwelcoming terrain? 900 feet elevations dropping to Longinov and Moss Creeks with creek beds, buffers, and a threat to the Chattahoochee River. This should be of city concern, because it clearly is of state concern. Peaks, valleys, creeks, and don't forget the rock quarry with the rocks. The map accompanying the notice to nearby neighbors obscures the topography of the petition property. These Fulton County maps show, and I have loads of them here if anybody want them, show to park, a topographical detail of said property. Your tax dollar at work and available to download on your desktop. There are also maps showing floodplains and so forth. The example of the 70/30 preservation split on the city's website is grossly incorrect, inaccurate, misleading, and only works if one owner owns all 40,000 acres, or if there's a takeover of private and leg, and legacy landowner's rights, which appears to be the attempt here through the comprehensive plan, supposedly approved by all of 450 households. Printed in ink and said it out loud does not make it right nor legal. There are many ways to make money in real estate. TDRs seem to be working especially for prohibitively expensive land to develop. Sometimes there's a friendly lawsuit that is settled rather than taken to court. Sometimes it's the threat of a lawsuit to force a rezoning that is taken that if is taken to court would not stand muster, even if the adjacent parcel with similar terrain has been rezoned in sympathy. Sometimes it's to rezon to a higher density to sell to the next sucker at a higher price. These scenarios may or may not apply here, but a hit dog will holler every time. I urge the Planning Commission not to allow itself to be used to promulgate this destructive, destruction on this community. There are better ways to land preservation. This is clearly spot zoning, and I ask that it be denied.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Donald Bowen.
My name's Donald Bowen. I live at 526 Locke Street in Palmetto, Georgia. My brother and I own the 150 acres on the, they're calling it the east side. If you look at the map, it's on the left side. Mr. Hearn and Ms. Fernandez has hit my points mostly. I still got questions about this exit, entrance and exit deal. We was at the meeting the other day, and Harrison Merrill and them said that if you had over 200 units, you had to have two entrances and exits. And I don't understand how is, this other fellow's talking about, if they exit on Vernon Grove is locked, how is that a exit and an entrance? And like he said, it's on a dirt road, too. So I'm just wondering, if they put the one exit in, right in front of Hopkins Road coming out of that curve, where would you put, where would the other one be to have two accesses? And I guess that pretty much covers outside of what Mr. Hearn and them already have brought to y'all's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's the last card. I have one written statement.
Please, please go ahead and read it if you would.
The statement is from Ms. Lisa Hearn. Dear Planning Commission members, I am writing to express my serious concerns regarding the proposed Rico hamlet. While I understand the potential for increased tax revenue, I believe the current proposal lacks a comprehensive assessment of its overall impact on our community. My opposition stems from several key considerations which, to date, haven't been adequately addressed in public discourse. First, the potential negative consequences associated with this development, such as increased traffic congestion, strain on existing infrastructure, and potential environmental impacts, warrant a thorough and transparent evaluation. The projected increase in tax revenue needs to be weighed against the significant costs associated with mitigating these negative externalities. Simply stating an increase in tax revenue without addressing these counterpoints is insufficient. Secondly, I am deeply concerned about the lack of information regarding the tangible benefits this development will bring to our community beyond increased tax revenue. What specific improvements to our quality of life are anticipated? It seems that it is proposed development will. is proposed development will prioritize financial gain over the well-being of our residents. Most importantly, I urge you to reconsider the current proposal in lieu of concerns of the majority of residents that wish to maintain the rural feel of our community. Our current zoning laws were put in place to assure that our town keeps its agricultural and rural characteristics. It appears that rezoning this area does not serve the best interests of our community as a whole. Rather, it is simply maximize tax revenue. I look forward to your response and a detailed explanation of how this development will positively impact our community in a sustainable and meaningful way. That's all of the opposition.
Would you like, you've reserved time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly appreciate the feedback that we've gotten from the residents over these several months. Just to address, primarily, I think what I heard is the concern about whether this has been a thoughtful process of whether this is the right place, or the right, or the wrong location, or the right plan, or publicly available information. In these many meetings that we've had, and the two community meetings that we had that were not required to have as the applicant, but we did at the encouragement of the board and members of the public, and one of which the applicant had representatives other than me there to engage in a long discussion and thoughtful discussion, I think was good, was very well attended. I wish everybody that had a concern could have been there to hear it from them directly. But in all of the many rezonings that I've been a part of in Georgia and other states, over 200 now, this is, this community and the framework that's been established in Chattahoochee Hills has probably the most involvement that I've seen just from a thorough process, whether it be from civic community engagement, to staff participation, to the elected bodies, both you and the council, that ensures that this process is done fairly. And the code is stringent in some respects. I've got different views on some of it, but that might be for another time. But when you apply the standards, which are from the state law that you guys are charged with basing your decision on, throughout this process, the plan that we've developed, I think with some reasonable conditions, meets each and every one of those applicable standards. And I would submit to you that this applicant will develop this in a responsible way. They're a vested partner in this community because of the other interests that the principals have in the community. And it's in their interest to have a development that works, that's good for the community, that people want to come and invest in, and something that ultimately we can look back and be proud of the work that we did. So with that, we'll submit the balance of our time. And if you have any questions, again, myself and the experts that we have standing by on Zoom are available. Mr. Garcia, our traffic engineer, and Mr. Walsh, our land planner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I believe that's all the comments.
Yes, sir. That's all comments.
The public comment period is closed. Mr. Morton, if you could give the staff position on this, and I think we ought to talk about the conditions too, if you would.
Exactly. As, I want to go, so the staff recommendation that proposed, sorry, recommends approval of the rezoning ordinance with the attached recommended conditions, these conditions, there are 16 of them, 10 of them, or actually nine of them have been on the list all along. One of them changed in form after we got the traffic plan. And then there are several new ones at the end, all in red. I don't know if you want to walk through them, walk through the new ones?
I think the new ones.
Okay, okay.
And the traffic study.
Okay, yep. So the traffic study is referred to in condition number six, which covers traffic and entrances. Letter A under that, the project traffic study recommended the following for site access configuration. Site driveway one, the south site, full access driveway in RICO aligned with Hopkins Road, one entering lane and one exiting lane, stop sign controlled on the driveway approach with RICO Road remaining free flow, a left turn lane and right turn lane for entering traffic, and provide and confirm adequate site distance per ASHTO standards. Site driveway two on the north side, which, based on discussion, may end up not being developed, full access driveway on RICO Road, one entering lane, one exiting lane, stop sign controlled on the driveway approach with RICO Road remaining free flow, and provide slash confirm adequate site distance per ASHTO standards. Then letter B under traffic and entrances, the deceleration or right turn lane and left turn lane at RICO Road entrance as recommended in the traffic study, along with any improvements required to accommodate those turn lanes, shall be constructed at the sole expense of the developer, and the additional right of way necessary for such improvement shall be dedicated to the city at no cost. That's the recommendation on traffic and entrances. Number 11, which deals with the Vernon Grove entrance, there is an additional sentence that was added to the end of that. It talks, I'll read the whole thing. Vehicular access to and from the property along the Vernon Grove frontage shall be limited to emergency vehicles only. Bicycle, pedestrian, and equestrian access shall be permitted along the Vernon Grove frontage of the property, just meaning we're limiting vehicle access, not those other alternative modes. The new language says, "The property owner will place at their own expense a locked gate or bollards with a Knox box for emergency access at the Vernon Grove Road entrance." And then the brand new conditions, number 12, "The uses on the north side of RICO Road shall be limited to open space, civic space, and single-family detached residential lots, and the number of residential lots north of RICO Road shall be limited to no more than 20." And that's what we had on the original plan. Again, there's been discussion of that, and that may end. Anyway, I'm sure there will be more discussion of that. Number 13, "The owner will at their sole expense construct a fence on the eastern and western property boundaries on the south side of RICO Road to provide protection for and from the adjacent livestock operations." Number 14, "The owner will at their sole expense replant the open portions of the district buffer with native plant materials to provide an effective four-season screen of the development from the public thoroughfares." That's where there's that opening on, there's a field at the port, the portion of the RICO Road frontage where the city requires buffers. Number 15, "The owner will take steps to limit potential injury at the location of the former quarry." Staff would also love to see the quarry turned into an amenity in some way. Number 16, that's, by the way, that last sentence is not part of the condition. Sorry. Number 16, "Multi-family units shall be limited to upper floors of buildings, housing," and I'm sorry, the sentence didn't finish there, "is commercial, the commercial uses" is what that's supposed to say. And that was, again, in line with what the applicant said was the intent all along, for any multifamily units to be at those upper levels of the commercial uses.
Is there a condition about evaluating moving the one entrance?
There could be. It wasn't something we had discussed before, so not something I have.
Well, let's move into discussion, and as we do, we'll do this pursuant to a motion, and then we will not vote on the motion, we will use that motion for purposes of discussion. I'll make the motion that we approve the proposal conditionally, as per those conditions, with the addition of a condition regarding the evaluation of moving the entrance. Is there a second to that? And again, this is, it's in there.
So it, right now it says 20. So if you want to change that, we'll need to address the change.
Yeah, indeed, indeed, we want to change that.
And I will point out again, the reference to the traffic study recommendations does make a specific reference to the site distance evaluation.
And we'll evaluate that too. So is there a second to the motion for purposes of discussion?
A second.
All right, with motion and a second, let's open the floor for discussion of this proposal.
If I can go first, I wanted to address a couple of the issues that the community brought forward. One was, what benefit does this provide to the community? So that's one of the questions we answer in addition to, does it meet our comp plan intent and our zoning? Well, I was driving to North Atlanta today. I heard on the radio that there's a practice now going on in Georgia where out-of-state property owners are buying up rental units. And on average, they own 30% of the rental units in Atlanta. And on average, people pay $2,000 a month to rent an apartment. And as these rental units are bought up, it seems like that this is going to hinder people from ever being able to afford to buy a house. We've talked about affordable housing here before, and it's suggested, is the best purpose of this property to do farmettes? If he had 200 acres to build on, he could do 10 farmettes. I was at a meeting a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago, and they were discussing the price, the current price of an acre of land here was $27,000. I don't know if that's correct, but it was someone who was a small developer here, so I, let's just use that as a figure. Just to buy the 20 acres for your farmette would be $540,000. If we ever have a hope of building a future in Chattahoochee Hills where we can have some affordable housing, I think we need to seriously look at developments that are something a little different than Serenby. This applicant has said he intends this development to be a smaller price point than Serenby, not quite as upscale as it. But he showed some of the houses on the current Fox Hall Resort property as an example of the building style, and they're quite nice. If the price point, correct me if I was wrong, wasn't it starting around 750? But it depends on when you build. 650, that still doesn't sound like middle income to me. I mean, that sounds like a lot of money, but it gives us another option other than Serenby, which has just really skyrocketed in price. And even into the two lovely new developments we have on the north side of town, those price points are quite high too. So what this tells us is, it will bring in middle class to upper middle class people in our community who want to be here because they could live anywhere. And they're moving to this area for a reason. And if you've attended these other meetings, you've heard people from Heatherwood Manor and from the estates at Cedar Grove say how much they love it here. They live in a different type of community than our mixed-use developments. They live in almost like a traditional subdivision because it was zoned before we were a city. They wouldn't live anywhere else, and they plan on aging out here. We need to think about that as we think about our rural heritage, that we want to bring people here because they love it here. It's not about changing what's here, it's about maybe expanding what's here and being inclusive to other people. Anyway, so right now, this, I think this applicant has done a pretty good job of communicating. Maybe he hasn't, I don't know if he hasn't reached out personally to the people that live around, but he's had at least two public meetings, I know, and he's been very receptive to answering the questions there. And more than that, two big concerns the community has had, which I think is the purpose of these public hearings, is address your concerns. Is there a way to mitigate those concerns? One was the safety concern of the curve on RICO Road. And they're open to looking at repositioning that driveway if there's a possibility. So they're going to look into that. And the other one was the orphaned 40 acres on the north side. All we had to do was ask, and they said, "Yeah, we're open to not building the homes there if that's what the community wants." I've also heard from farmers on our Facebook group that say, "This community needs to support our farming." Well, when the people who own the farms move on and their families don't want to farm here anymore, they sell the property. What's the best use of that? Is if 70% of that property could be preserved? I know in the RICO community, at our last comp plan, it was talked about having the RICO historic crossroads, and that hasn't made any movement at all. I think there's probably been change about it. So we really have nothing in RICO besides Smith Store, no place to eat, no place to socialize. The city has a placemaking collaborative right now, and that's one thing they're looking at, is you've got to build places for the community to be a community. Having a development like this in RICO, that could be one other benefit. It's going to be well buffered. If you look at the topographical map, you'd be hard pressed to find 20, 10, 20 acre lots on here just because of the topography. And it looks like the few places they have where they are building in the flat area are going to be very well buffered. So I think that there are significant benefits. And because of that, and the compliance with our comp plan and zoning, I'm leaning towards supporting this.
Thank you, Lori. Other comments, please?
Just have a question about the motion. So it appears that the motion addressed rezoning from RL to mixed use, but also, I guess, staff recommended approval of the concept plan. So is this motion also addressing the concept plan and the rezoning, or just the rezoning only?
My motion was just the rezoning.
Just the rezoning.
That's something we should engage on, whether we want to also approve the concept plan. There are pros and cons to.
I will say, written into the conditions says, "Site plan will serve as the concept plan." So if you approve it with the recommended conditions, that would also be a recommendation to approve the con.
But it is something for us to discuss.
Right. I think we should keep it separate. Right.
Mr. Moore, what are the reasons that you would say to approve the concept plan at this point?
It's consistent with the requirements. The basis is consistency with UDC and the comp plan, and it is consistent with those meets the requirement.
And what happens if we don't approve the concept plan?
They would need to come back for approval. So again, the concept plan would be a recommendation from Planning Commission, city council vote. If city council did not vote to include concept plan approval as a part of this, then they would have to come back in for concept plan approval before they could get a preliminary plat approved by the planning commission, which has to happen before they can start moving dirt.
Well, they have to do that anyway. But the concept plan does present a concept right now. And if they have to come back, it may be a different concept.
Could be. Could be. Right.
So there is a, yes, Will, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish your thought.
No, that was it. That was it. It's just, there are some pros and cons to whether you want to include the concept plan with this or not.
That's one thing, Will. So I think one thing we do need to clear up in the conditions, whether on that north side, whether it's going to be the exact number of units, because I think the condition currently reads 20?
No, the condition is going to be no units.
Oh, I know. Right. Right. They're going to relocate. Right.
Back to the main, the main south side.
Exactly. Exactly.
So this number of units will remain the same, approved number of units, just none of them will be on the north side.
Okay.
Great. But it is, it is appropriate to address the changes in that condition if we're changing the plan, yeah?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mine is more of a point of order on the agenda. The agenda is for the recommendation on the zoning map, and then under new business, concept plan for the shops. There is nothing on the agenda about a concept plan being voted on tonight.
Because it's a first read?
No, we're not the first read.
So there's language, and I'm sorry if I didn't, if I didn't quote it, there is language now in the zoning that allows it to happen concurrently. So it's written, try to find it before we go if you want. I think it's, in any case, it is, so it's written into the conditions. If, again, if you were to vote on the conditions, it would be approved as part of that. That's right, you're right, though, it's not on the agenda as a separate vote. It's just, it's looped into the vote as a condition on the map change.
Is it a separate zoning action?
No, it's not technically a zoning action. The concept plan is part of the subdivision process, first step in the subdivision process.
Well, it's, it's an option. It's an option to simply look at the rezoning alone and then come back and have them come back for the concept plan. I think the way Mike has presented it here is, the concept plan, as they presented it, is one of the conditions, is approval of that is one of the conditions of the rezoning. And so I think we could, we could. And so I think we could approach it either way. Of course, there is a, we're not sure what the revised concept plan will show, but we will see it, so.
Could I ask a question, Charles? So if we made it a separate option, would we make, would you make recommendations to the concept plan? I mean, is there some reason you wouldn't want to vote on it tonight? There's something about it that you'd like changed, or?
So I think basically, like what Will is saying, because it's not on the agenda, basically, the agenda basically states that we're voting on the zoning, changing the zoning from RL to mixed use. Even though staff did recommend in their recommendation that we were approving it, I guess procedurally, it's not on the table.
And I think what highlights that is that we've divided up the next item.
Yes.
Two different.
Correct.
Two different.
Correct.
And that was, that was a decision by staff to divide it up, and I agreed with it. So I do think, though, even though it's not on the agenda, it's appropriate because it was in the packet and it was in as a condition to it. But I think we can, we can, we can go either way, really can. Is there a motion to amend the motion?
Yes, I think if we are going to include it, that the motion should be amended if, yes, yes.
So you want to make a motion to amend the motion to approve the zoning so that it eliminates that condition, Mike, on approval of the concept plan?
Okay.
That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Shall we both discuss it? I, again, I think it's optional for us, and I've.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So who made, who's making that motion?
Charles has made the motion, and Will has seconded.
Okay, thank you.
May I read the language from the code, just so you know what's, so this is in subsection 46.D. 46 is the section on concept plans, the last sentence. And I think that's what the change was in this list of changes, that last round of changes. When an application to amend the official zoning map includes a site plan and other materials that meet the requirements for a concept plan, the site plan may be approved as the concept plan in the rezoning action.
Yep. And so it's allowed, it's allowed, but it has not been separated on the, on the agenda. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on it? My suggestion would be to go ahead and approve the concept plan and get the package up to council, if we approve it, if we approve it. But, and rather than having them come back.
Sure, if you have reasons not to approve, right? If you have objections to something that's in the concept plan, certainly, right? But if you don't, it would make sense to go ahead and approve it. Concept plans do expire, right? If they don't start pulling permits. And so there's a chance, if, if we think development's a long way off and look at the water and sewer or whatever, that it would expire anyway. They have to start, they have to come back for.
Well, that's a good point.
Preliminary plat.
That's a good point.
But you could argue that either way, though, right? If it's just going to expire anyway, why approve it?
Well, let's ask.
But we don't know what their schedule is.
Let's ask the applicant if he has any, if the applicant has any preference in this.
I guess my thought would just be for in terms of administrative economy, that we just go ahead and approve it and keep the development process going forward and, you know, in a positive way. That would be, I think, the applicant's intent.
It is. Excuse me, excuse me, sir, the public comment period is over this one. No, no, the public comment period is over. He's the applicant. No, no, he's the applicant, and we can ask the applicant to speak and answer questions. And I have a couple more questions, but the public comment period is closed, sir. Interesting points. I think the interesting point of the concept plan potentially expiring anyway is an interesting point. Any other thoughts?
We heard from Greg earlier in the working session. Is there a way where we could ask him to come up again and to restate his points?
Sure. But we do have a motion, we're discussing the motion to amend the motion. And so, does it have to do with that?
No.
Okay.
So.
I don't have any changes to the concept plan, so I see it's just a technicality. And I think it might help the council to have the full vote on it so they can move forward with it, but.
Okay. So Mike, could you just go over that, that condition regarding the relocation from the north to the south?
Sure. And again, we're not voting on the primary motion yet. This is just.
Yes, this is, yeah, to clarify, right?
Right.
The revised motion.
So what I would do, it was the additional, first of the additional conditions, and it's number 12, says the uses on the north side of Rico Road shall be limited to open space, civic space, and single-family detached residential lots. And the number of residential lots north of Rico Road shall be limited to no more than 20. I would just take out the end and just say, the use on the north side of Rico Road shall be limited to open space and civic space.
Right, right. So my concern was basically the last part that talked about the 20. Because before, how we had said the 20 versus the 40, so how he's going to take that out. So if he's going to take that out of the condition, then motion withdrawn.
Well, we've had a motion and a second, so I think, I think we probably have to vote on it.
Okay.
All right, let's vote on the motion to amend. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion fails. So the motion, the first motion is still on the table, and we have another thing, but there are a couple of questions, I think. You have a question for the fire chief, right? Is the chief still here?
My only question really is if you could repeat what you were saying earlier in the, in the working agreement, in the working meeting, particularly around some of the issues around width.
Of the streets, the access points, we have a preferred width for streets. In the event, in this case, we're talking about private streets, so there is some working freedom with the applicant there. But the code does stipulate that you have to have an uninhibited access in and out. So if you give, if you consider the routine flow of traffic by residents, you know, what, what width seems practical with that everyday flow? And then the sudden serendipitous access, you know, for an emergency vehicle. And I use emergency vehicle to include not just fire apparatus, but medical response. So as you look at the code, the code suggests that there has, there might be a certain width, there should be a certain width, that there should be certain turning radius, given the specifications or the measurements, I'll say, of our fire apparatus or any emergency apparatus that might come in there. What would be the worst possible case, might be a way of thinking of it. And the ability for that apparatus to egress. So in some cases, cul-de-sacs, excuse me, cul-de-sacs, hammerhead turnarounds and so forth are required. And then inherent in all of that is, well, it has to be a certain grade and a certain surface that will withstand the gross vehicle weight rating, you know, for those responses, for those vehicles.
Mr. Moore, when are those addressed in planning, those concerns?
So those, you're right, those are all engineering concerns. When the land development permit, land disturbance permit comes in, which covers a number of things, covers the grading, the erosion control, the post-development stormwater, covers provision of utilities and streets, and all those things designed by an engineer, reviewed by the engineer, also reviewed by the fire marshal, who ensure that they meet fire code and the requirements of the department. Those at the land disturbance permit phase.
Thank you very much. I have a question for the applicant, if I could. There was a question raised in public comments about endangered species. And although it was unclear which they were, there were a couple, and I think I know, but there are a couple in Palmetto, the Palmetto area, that are presumed to extend here. Can you tell us about your, the evaluation that you all made, if any?
So just basically walking the site and what we know about the site, we didn't engage any sort of environmental engineer. We haven't gotten to that, that aspect, I guess, of whether, I think that would be more in the engineering phase as to whether, when the civil engineer is on site, I think that's part of more of their, the items that they will go through their checklist. But in terms of what the application represented, I think is accurate, that is basically based on the knowledge of the applicant at the, at the time of submitting it. Of course, you know, been on sites before where, you know, you're doing, actively engaging a project and find gopher tortoises. Just even if you have an analysis, professional analysis done, they can very easily miss a depression where there's, where there's gopher tortoise. And, and then you take appropriate measures from there.
You said gopher tortoise.
Gophers, yes. So I think what has, has the, I'll stand by our application, but as the process unfolds in terms of engineering, that's certainly something that we can have heightened, ask the engineers to pay heightened attention to, based on perhaps sightings of bald eagles on the site. I've been on the site several times, and I've not seen any evidence of them. But that's not to say, you know, that, that it's a big site, so something I think we could definitely.
Well, there's clearly evidence of bald eagles in the area, at least a pair. But it's not, I don't know where the nest is, and I'm not sure I've seen any. I think, I think, yes, that's, that's, would be of concern, but I think it's, it's much a concern that there's someone qualified doing it, and someone who has that kind of experience. Did you have a comment?
Doug, can we ask Mike what, can we ask Mike what the traditional process is? Even for single-family resident homeowners, are, are anyone who builds here, are we required to do some type of environmental study? And how does that work? I don't know.
Actually, don't have them codified as a part of the process. I would recommend if you want a study to find the, the parameters of the study at, as it, if you want that to happen at a, at a later phase land disturbance permit, or even preliminary plating phase, which is probably a better, a better time.
It is not a city requirement, but there is a requirement to protect endangered species. So it is something that's, so I think a requirement by a qualified specialist to confirm the presence or absence of endangered species prior to development, prior to development.
Preliminary plating. Again, a good time, because that's when you're laying out where things will be going.
It sounds like you're amenable to that.
That's reasonable, I think so.
Yeah.
Do you have, sorry, language again?
A, that, prior to plat, preliminary plating, that a qualified, I'm not going to say environmental because it, it may be a different kind of engineer for endangered species, but a qualified consultant or engineer be retained to determine the presence or absence of endangered species at the, at the project site.
You're so good at that.
That's for sure.
Anything else for me, Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions for that? Let me double check. No, that's fine. I understand, but we may have others. Go ahead. So we have a motion before us, but I think there is a condition in there that we haven't addressed yet, and that is the evaluation of the moving location of the road.
Access point.
You go ahead, please.
And it sounded like the applicant was amenable to looking into moving the location of the primary access on the south side closer to the Long Geno Creek, just for the safety purposes, the concern being that where it is now, it doesn't have good line of sight around that curve. And they were going to, I don't know how you would word that, Mike, to see if, if it's a better safety option, or?
So do you want an evaluation? So you do, you also want to balance, in addition to site distance, the proximity to the existing intersection on the other side, you'll want a certain amount of separation, for the engineers to determine, but I think that's something that they can maybe weigh. I would suggest putting, maybe putting something along those lines into the, into the conditions so that they have the flexibility to weigh the benefits of a certain distance from the other intersection versus a certain distance. Of course, they'll still need to meet the Astro standards, right, for the, for the site distance either way. But do you, do you want to move up in the process, that evaluation, to make it earlier so that we're receiving actual site, site distance analysis, so that, because they would then discover if there's a true issue and want to make the.
If it goes in or not.
At that.
Oh, yeah. Give us a suggestion. It's not a.
Again, I guess moving.
Deal breaker, I just, it's not a deal breaker if they can't move it, we just want to see if they can.
Right, right. So you could, you could just say, get back to us within a certain period of time. I would maybe suggest, again, the preliminary plating phase. That comes in for.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Okay. So they would submit then the site distance evaluation with the preliminary plat with the justification for the final location, considering site distances and the location of Hopkins, the Hopkins Road intersection.
There was another, go ahead, please, because this may be for the applicant. There was a comment about two entrances.
Needed at 200.
Yeah.
Units.
Yeah, so that was a comment Mr. Merrill was responding to in the community meeting from, best that I can recall is whether we should have the emergency access to be an open access. And he basically stated, if I recall, and some of you were there, so you may recall better, but I think it was, Mr. Merrill's understanding, which is mine, is it was a requirement of the city to have the emergency access, but he would be fine if it were open all the time, just whatever made sense. So we're open either way.
You're talking about Vernon Grove Road, right?
Correct.
And I think previously we discussed about that as emergency availability only because it's gravel, is that correct?
That's right.
But the question I heard was that if you have 200 units, you're required to have two entrances, is that what we heard?
So the, I think the references, the reference was to fire code, correct? Yeah, the 200, the 200, the two entrance requirement is in fire code. And so they have their two.
Okay, so they can use a Vernon Grove because it's a emergency.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you for.
Thank you.
Clarifying.
Any other comments, questions?
Just a little clarification on that. So the, somebody had talked about the, the future of gravel roads.
Right.
Was one of the comments. And it's my understanding that no gravel roads, number one, can be paved.
Right.
Right? That's part of our zoning, the way that it's set, and as long as that never gets changed, no gravel roads would ever get paved.
Right.
Number one. Number two, hamlets cannot have entrance or exit except for emergency use only to a gravel road, right? They have to go to a paved road.
Right. So any, right, so the way it's written, yeah, I would say, I would say a couple of things. The way, the way it's written, you can't derive, you can't provide access to more than 25 lots via gravel road. And so if it were a, something smaller than 25 lots, potentially it could connect to, to a gravel road. But these are larger. The first example where we addressed this directly was the Rosa Grove development, sort of set a precedent then for how we, how we would handle such things. I would also say, this is not directly responsive to what you said, I'm sorry, but I want to add, as a, if it's included as a condition, saying that that entrance can, has to be protected, has to be emergency only, even if that road later got paved, it would require a zoning modification, action by city council, advertisement signs, the same as a rezoning, in order to change that condition. So even if it were paved, unless we tie the condition to the fact that it's not paved.
That's a question. So right now, our zoning doesn't allow paving. If a future council changes that, but this was proved under this zoning, does this zoning stand?
Well, the condition, the condition, which is actually a little stronger. So if the zoning changes, if the zoning changes, the, unless the applicant asserts a vested right to the old language, which I guess they wouldn't in this case if they were trying to, trying to do that, right? Then the new zoning could apply. But as a condition adopted with the rezoning, it takes a, basically another, the equivalent of another rezoning action, called zoning modification, but you follow all the same rules as the original rezoning, or whatever the rules are at the time, in order to make that change. So if you want to change the language of a condition, and we have a condition that says it will be emergency only, basically they have to come through and it's like another rezoning application. Process, the process is the same.
Yeah.
Now, if we wrote the condition saying, emergency access only on gravel roads, and then that road was paved, then they would be allowed to do it, but it's not written that way. We could write it that way if you wanted to make it flexible.
I guess the purpose for me kind of stating all that was then also leading up to the second entrance question, and. question and Fire Chief Greg talking about the entrances and is one entrance, one main entrance, I mean, this was brought up in prior meetings also, is that enough for the amount of people that are proposed to be living in here? Is one main in out appropriate?
Does it traffic matter? I don't say, I don't know that I can answer that with any particular expertise. The traffic study did not suggest anything, any any problem with that, but I don't have particular expertise to apply to that specific question.
Can I ask a variant of that question, John?
Sure.
If you've got a hamlet, right, and it's got one entrance, one exit, is that consistent with a hamlet? Or is that against the spirit of a hamlet of you've got this cluster with people coming and going?
So in in theory, you want, you know, development as it comes along to create a grid, right? The you want multiple routes, you want multiple ways of getting getting different places. We have in the code a requirement for a hamlet to provide an easement that stubs out to any prop, any neighboring property, 50 acres or larger, on the theory that maybe one day that would get developed and then that that easement could be used for that inter parcel connectivity. That would apply certainly for the in a real way to the the Serenby hamlet below. Their plan actually showed, interestingly, a, you know, a dotted line where the easement, they imagined the easement would go to the north. And it is on the east side of the property where their that phase comes closest to the to the buffer there. And so we would require that easement to be in place. Now, who knows how long it might take for that to be developed? And the idea is not necessarily that we would have the the applicant make the improvements necessary, but they would be, it would be available if the city or somebody wanted to make those improvements in the future, those easements would be in place. So it does, the zoning does anticipate additional connections, but it doesn't say that you have to have, you know, this other access down. Right, on just because you have frontage, for example.
I guess that doesn't really answer the question, but you're saying we can have a hamlet with one in and out entrance. The only things we have right now to look to as an example is of course Serenby, which has gone from Atlanta Noonan to Hutchinson Ferry and has and even from the start has always kind of had.
Bear Creek one on Wilkerson Mill Road will only have one way in and out.
Okay.
There's one on Jenkins Road.
Oh, it goes through. That's all we have.
So would a second entrance go be absurd?
No, you would have, so I feel like with our site distance constraints, it's already feels difficult, though not necessarily impossible. It can be, it can be evaluated for that, but I feel like we're already pushing them well away from their western boundary. And then with the creek on the east, I'm not saying it's impossible. It feels like, I don't know, we could, we could have a.
So if we're recommending and and it shows that they can move the location by the creek and they do that, there's still that original location. So if it proves in the future that they just need more access, would there be any reason because of those two locations? I mean, that is absurd to have two.
If they're so close together. Might make sense.
But where else would you do it? Because that's their only asking point is.
If there's room on the other side of the creek, possibly. I think there is room between the buffer, well, you would be, they would be driving well into that that buffer on the other side, not the creek buffer, but the district buffer. It does seem a straight, so I feel like they're the site distance evaluation is probably going to say, yes, you need to move the entrance to the east. That's what I'm expecting, just because by my rough measurement that I did, it looked like it was between 200 and 300 feet from where unless you pull the trees down, but that's part of their hamlet buffer, you could create additional site if there's not topo in the way. But I don't think anybody wants to do that. So if you're pushing it farther to the east, there's not much more to the east that where it would make sense to put another entrance.
I'd like to invite the applicant if he has any comments on this.
Tom, I I don't know if you're on still and or if you're hearing all this, if you've got anything you would add.
Yeah.
Any thoughts?
Well, as I said in the last meeting, it's not 200 feet, Mike, it's about 400, a little close to 400 feet on the tangent. So we have, we probably have around 70 to 80 feet that we have to push further north or up further up. It is, we do have, I mean, the gravel road is used for emergency access to the to the development. And that's what's required by law is to have two two accesses into a development like this. So we're meeting that standard of the two two points. We can certainly push, again, looking at the sidelines further up, we we actually were trying to join the two intersections of the road across from our site so we'd have a good connection to that road. But if we move it further up, we can do that. I would always, I would suggest that if we had to have two exits on or two entries on Rico Road, that we would always keep them below the drainage swale in the two creeks because that would be problematic trying to get across those those two. And I think it would be environmentally, it just seems very insensitive to get into that area. But I do want to really reiterate, we are meeting the the standards that you have to have those two in ingresses for emergency vehicles.
Questions for? Thank you very much. Any other discussion at this point? With not, I'd like to move for a vote. The motion before us is a motion to recommend to the city council approval of the zoning proposal, the rezoning proposal as conditioned. And if there are any questions about the condition, will you look?
I do have the the north part is one of the conditions, right?
Yeah, that's the motion. So let's clarify what additional conditions, the go ahead and read the one about no no units on the north.
Okay, great. So it's condition number 12 in red on the third page of conditions, and it would be changed to read simply, the uses on the north side of Rico Road shall be limited to open space and civic space.
Okay. And then we have a condition regarding, go ahead.
That's right. So there are three, three new conditions prior to the preliminary plat, a qualified consultant or engineer. Sorry, having trouble reading my writing. Will determine the presence or absence of endangered species. The next one is evaluate, I think this is before also by the preliminary plat, evaluate the moving the primary entrance closer to the creek. Sorry, that's rewritten, so there aren't three, there are just two, the the later version, the newer version, better version, preliminary by the with the, along with the application for preliminary plat, submit and evaluate, the applicant shall submit an application of site distance and a justification for the location of the entrance, considering site distances and the location of the Hopkins Road intersection.
Right. Those are the newer conditions, plus all the other plus all the other conditions that are in the packet. Any questions on the conditions or that? If not, let's move move to a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We have four opposed? So the motion doesn't carry?
Motion to recommend denial?
We don't need to, I think, at this point.
It's denied.
Okay. Denied, so. All right. Let's take a five minute break. I'm sorry, folks, if that's all right, but I think a five minute break would probably be appropriate.
That's a surprise.
No, that's okay.
It's over there. Sorry.
And we're going to reconvene at this point? Okay, yeah. We're going to open the second public hearing now, and this is a recommendation on a special use permit for 7.66 acres at zero Cascade Palmetto Highway to allow a gas station in the historic Crossroads District. The property is two parcels at the corner of Cascade Palmetto Highway and Campbellton Fairburn Road. As part of new business, we also will have a recommendation and a concept plan on that. I'm going to suggest that our discussion, when we get there, we take comments and we discussion on both of those, both of those ideas. So let us open the public hearing. Mike, do you want to give a brief description and not your recommendation? We'll get to that later.
Okay. So this is 0.766 acres at the corner, as as the chair said, of it's the busiest intersection in the city, Cascade Palmetto Highway and Highway 92. Across the street to the southeast is the City of South Fulton. To the northwest is Old Campbellton. There's a cemetery in that direction, the the lodge, and then the the road that heads toward the Beaver's House and the the river access. And then across the street to the southwest is Charlie's Store, the one existing gas station in the city, also owned and operated by the applicant. The proposal is for a gas station with a convenience store and additional retail, about 66, sorry, 6,600 square feet of additional retail and not counting two restaurants, quick service restaurants. The applicant has discussed a national coffee chain and a national pizza chain, I think for coffee. He's looking at Dunkin' Donuts, I don't know. The other one, don't know if that's material, considering tenants can come and go, but that's what they're they're looking looking at. In 2018, there were several approvals by city council, a rezoning of the property to historic crossroads, a special use permit for a gas station, a variance to allow the gas pumps to be in the front because code requires that they be in the back, and approval of a concept plan, that all got approved. And in the in the meantime, the special use permit expired and the concept plan expired, so they're back with a very similar plan, asking for approval of those those two things again. And surrounded, I guess, the roads that surround the property, again, to the southeast Cascade Palmetto Highway is a City of South Fulton road. To the southwest is Highway 92, that is in the City of Chattahoochee Hills, but it's a GDOT road. And then to the northwest is about 420 feet of Church Street, which is a small Campbellton road, but it is controlled by and maintained by Chattahoochee Hills.
Thank you. We'll move to the public comment period. The same rules and procedures that I read at the top of the last hearing still apply. Do we have any public comment cards?
Yes, I have three cards and one written statement, all in opposition.
All right. I think we can limit the time for opposing and the time for supporting to 15 minutes. The public comment period is now open and the applicant may make a statement if and you can take as much of the time as you want and reserve for some for rebuttal if you'd like.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us tonight. Just clarification, are we doing the concept plan and the special use permit at the same time? Do you want to hear them separately?
I think we should discuss them at the same time for expediency. Yeah.
The public hearing is only.
It's only for the zoning, but I think that to the extent you have comments on that concept plan, I think it's fine.
Yeah, okay. Well, like Mr. Morton said, this is our second time here after we went through this process until 18. As you're aware, of course, COVID, we just saw it slowed things down, and now we're back after the moratorium to present this plan to the city. We're here on a special use permit for a gas station, and the criteria is what, you know, we need to look at here. And and looking at the criteria, the first one is whether the plan is consistent with the requirements of the zone district, and we think there are. And in fact, the staff report explains why, and I'll just go through those now. The use is allowed within the historic district. The site plan, there is an issue about parking lot design. It's a little confusing and difficult because a project is surrounded by three streets there. And also, we have the variance for the gas pumps in the front. So designing that, we understand this, the city suggests that we do the parking not between the building and the street. And looking at the plans and listening to public comments we've had over the last, this meeting today, we had with the public, and then one last week, and looking at the plans, we would propose that, and this more goes to concept plan, but taking out all the all the parking in the front, except for the one right between the canopy and the and the actual convenience store, those would be about 20, I think, 27 spaces. We're still within the requirements and moving those parking spaces in the more public areas, like putting in a streetscape. I was looking at some of the other pictures, there's been some pictures going on, what should look like. And of course, that's a process that comes later when we, you know, go after the LDP's building permits. We have to submit the facades and with the streetscapes and all that. But I know that everyone's interested in what's going to look like now, so just let's talk about for just a minute. Take away the parking in the front of the buildings and replace those with like picnic area, like, you know, tables and some of the pictures that you've seen already about the project. I think that would ameliorate some of the concerns about the buildings being close to the street, because now you have the building up to the street, except for you have, it's very common to have the the little benches and parking sitting areas and things like that, which Doug tells Ryan to the whole concept the city has about public spaces. Now, the concept plan, going back to concept plan a little bit, does have a lot of different public spaces. One of the things we approached the city about actually, the city's idea was maybe dedicating some of that land to public areas, because we have 7.66 acres. We're going to use very little of that and the, well, not little, but very small percentage of that compared to the total land. We have a lot of land behind it, which is on the river corridor that will be state green space, septic field. So it would be keeping with the idea of of putting everything to the front and the streetscape. But going back to the criteria, the second one's compatibility with land uses, and it is compatible with surrounding properties, there's a gas station across the already. The historic Crossroads District does include such uses as a gas station, and clearly that would be within the compatibility, accuracy of egress and we've done that. We have one lane in and out here and then another one there. So we we trying to meet the requirements of what needs to be ingress and egress to property. And then also adding to the pedestrian flow is this area, I think we will see more people in the future. We're making sure that we do have that walkability that we like, including the little park, public park areas. And the idea there is to put some, you know, the the places to the dogs to, you know, people walk their dogs, they have the little poop bags, they have little trash cans, all the things that you that you want to see to encourage, put a walker on the community. And I think with the big project coming possibly down the road, you're going to see more and more walk, there's already a lot of bicycle traffic through there. Alex, you know, has the store across the street, he has some other properties around there, he sees the bike uses there. So some of the some of the concept that we have is to make a little park area where people can go to the convenience store, they can buy their energy drinks or whatever they want, their snacks, they can sit outside, enjoy that, and then continue on the bike ride to make this not only a place to go through, but a destination as well. So I think it meets that third criteria. Consistency with the adopted wastewater treatment plants, all that. There's no wastewater treatment plants there. There's no sewer available to that property, but we've gone through it, we're going through the MRT process, and it seems like we'll have plenty of septic drain field to handle that. The next one's accuracy to public facilities. Well, this really won't impact the schools. Well, this really won't impact the schools. It won't, it'll increase the green space park area and does also power water, all those requirements. The last one would, excuse me, the next one is whether there's adverse impacts and there's no noise, smoke or dust. The one issue that has been brought up in the public meetings is lighting. And we will have the downlighting, which is affecting the city of code and also to keep the skyscape nice. One of the questions we got was, is it going to be 24 hours a day? If the city wants, we can go to the 18-hour day. And again, there are no residential structures with 600 feet of fuel pumps. So there's not that concern about the lighting, but it's also, you know, we can clearly comply with the night sky ordinance that you have here. And finally, about, you know, the last is whether it be an adverse impact environmentally, sensitive areas or historic resources. And most of the sites within river corridor, a good chunk of it is. But what we're doing is outside the environmental area is pushed up to the front, which is good environment, it also meets the city requirements. And there's also some historic features within the area, but not on the property itself that we need to address. So those reasons, you know, the criteria, I believe, are clearly met. They were met before, they even met more so now. But I understand the, the city is very concerned, as they should be, with the impact of the whole process. And that's something we've been very transparent about. How it looks from the outside is not as important to us. We want to make it look like what the city wants. We, and that process comes through with the facades down the road. What we're looking for now is a special use permit for the gas station, which I outlined the criteria, I think we meet those. The only thing, staff report objection on that was the parking. The parking was, I think we ameliorated that by, you know, and this can be part of the concept plan approval, is that those parking spaces go away and replaced by park, little mini parks, you might say, places people can sit, congregate. And then finally, the, as my battery died, so my iPad here. For that reason, I think that it's appropriate to approve the use permit. I'm not sure if you want me to address the concept plan or not now?
We don't need to, but if you'd like to, you can, it's fine.
Well, I think the concept plan with the changes that we proposed just now as they're moving the parking area, I think it meets all the requirements of the code. And we're willing to address any questions about that. I know there's a lot of community feedback about the actual tenant mix, the, the gasage across the street, things like that. But really, we're respectfully here on the criteria of this project. And the other facade, the facades and land disturbance and licenses and all that, that comes later and we'll have to meet those requirements as they come from. But as a precursor to us moving forward, we have to make sure we get this, the use permit. So that's why we're here tonight and thank you very much and...
Thank you.
I was there the rest of my time.
So our first speaker is Angela Addison.
Okay, good evening, I'm Angela Addison. I'm supposed to get my address and all of that, 5451 Two Hills Drive, Auburn, City of Chatt hills. So I'm, I'm not so much as opposed to what the gentleman would like to do as I am opposed to what the city has allowed to take place. The initial issuance of the variance to be able to build a gas station does not fit within the charter and the concept of Chattahoochee Hills. And I believe that some of this was given, and it was given during a time when there were no communities that housed people in that part of the county. But as it stands, even though this would be the only, well, the second gas station in Chatt Hills, northern Chatt Hills, we are bookended by four gas stations, two that belong to South Fulton. And then if this is built too, that will belong to Chattahoochee Hills, but we're bookmarking that. I, I, I feel kind of sad for the developer in that he was given this idea that what he was bringing to the table would be accepted by the stakeholders. And yes, it was when the stakeholders were just, was just Charlie across the street and whomever else. But like the people who want to keep it rural, I want to keep it within the scope and spectrum of what Chattahoochee Hills is supposed to be. And for my family, we don't own acres of land. We have one acre in a subdivision. That's not typical for what Chattahoochee Hills probably was founded on. But to get our concept of 40 acres and a mule, which we obviously have been denied historically, it's going to require that I feel like my investment in my home is going to be mirrored in the type of businesses that are around me. If he can have a gas station behind, not so much a city center, because it's just seven acres, right? But that could be our welcome center. That could, if you connect it to historic Campbell County or whatever that is, where the church is, and you actually develop the park so it looks like something that we would be proud of, we could really make a statement when people enter Chattahoochee Hills. We might not be able to have the boutiques and all of that, but we can definitely have something that says that we are proud of our city. And if that is the face, this welcome center, this historic district, and then the gas station is behind it, I think that that would be great, but as is, I oppose.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Roberto Espinoza.
My name is Roberto Espinoza, 8555 Church Street, the famous Church Street that maybe the truck or the gas propane cannot go anymore. The garbage truck cannot go anymore, I, maybe I cannot go anymore. I don't want a crime magnet in that area. I don't know if they are following the 2,000 feet from the river. A gas tank is good for 10 years, then they start to leak. And I am a problem with the septic tanks. I am behind the property. They are planning to put the septic tank down there. And I have three small creek that feed my lake and from the lake is going to the river. So I don't want a gas station down there, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
92 and Cascade-Palmetto, I don't know what's the, be the problem with that gas station.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tiffany Towns.
Good evening, Tiffany Towns, 346 Lowbrook Court, Fairborn. So I have four points. The first point is this, there is a very good plan from February of 2021 for the historic Campbellton Crossroads framework, right? That was adopted by South Fulton, City of South Fulton and City of Chattahoochee Hills. As a new resident in the estates at Cedar Grove, as Angela noted, in the northern part of Chattahoochee Hills, we want this vision. We bought into this vision. And unfortunately, what we're seeing proposed, the gentleman kept talking about the requirements and criteria. It may meet the letter of that, but it does not meet the spirit of that 215-page document that I kept asking, have they read? Because if they read it, they can come back with a plan that actually reflects that vision. Second, Mr. Alex seems like a very nice man. He develops gas stations, he develops nicer gas stations from what I can tell. However, when all you have is a hammer, everything seems like a nail. Chattahoochee Hills is not a nail. We have a unique vision for what we want our community to be, and so that's what we'd like to bring. The Texaco station that Mr. Alex also runs across the street is problematic. And as a business owner in our community, the way that that Texaco looks says to me, does this business owner value and respect the vision that we have and what community residents have bought into? Number three, we asked about market analysis. This gets to the concept plan and the types of tenants. The gentleman, the attorney, kept representing that he thinks that if there is a market analysis, which they admitted they've not done any type of real estate development or retail market analysis, what they have is the BP gas station analysis around putting gas tanks there, right? And, and what that intersection might bring. But they don't know actually what might be needed. We are in a retail desert. I want that corner to be developed. I want it to be developed to serve the full range of economic and income that is represented by people who are moving into Chattahoochee Hills. We just heard that the development Rico Hamlet is starting at 600,000. My development is starting at 600,000. Bucart is going to have a development that starts in that area. Creative Land Company at Cochrane Mill and Cedar Grove are also going to be middle to high-end homes. I think we can do better than liquor stores and Dunkin' Donuts. In some ways, I found it as an insult. And then finally, accountability for staff commission and counsel. I think, Mr. Morton, you are doing an admirable job of trying to funnel through all these developer questions. But the problem is, you need to get community input before you give developer feedback. One of the things they kept saying at the community meeting was that staff had given them the impression that this is something that we want. How would you know until you come talk to us? And so now I do feel sorry for Mr. Alex that he's got this plan, that he's been given the impression meets our vision, but it doesn't. And so we need to make sure that we have infrastructure and that we uphold the vision that's laid out by the Campbellton Crossroads master plan. I oppose.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we only have one more, and that's the written statement that came in.
Please go ahead and read it in.
This is from Martha and Cornell Stuart Joseph. My husband and I have been, have not been able to attend the sessions regarding the proposed shops at Chattahoochee, Inc. And ask that our dissent below be read at the upcoming public hearing. Chattahoochee Hills is unique in its beauty and design, but we should be mindful that this uniqueness is not restricted to certain areas of the city. Change is good and should be embraced, but change requires thoughtful consideration with a focus on how it impacts the city. To remind everyone, there is already one gas station convenience store at the intersections of Cascade-Palmetto Highway and Campbellton Road, and two more at Cedar Grove Road and Cascade-Palmetto Highway. All are at the entranceway to the north side of Chattahoochee Hills. When one drives by these location, each appears to be dilapidated and run down, truly an eyesore in need of maintenance and upkeep. None appear to suggest a friendly welcome to our lovely city. It would be helpful to know prior to council making the decision to add more, how many of the Chatt Hills residents support this existing, these existing businesses? The construction of a fourth gas station plus convenience store, fast food restaurants and possibly a liquor store, in our view, would adversely impact the residents. Cedar Grove and Cochrane Mill Roads would be used as a pass-through to get to this business venture. We have enough traffic as it is. This leads me to wonder and ask. One, the location in question is Zone Historical Crossroads, located near churches, cemeteries and residents. Why on earth are we considering this? Two, initially approved in 2018, is, is very aspect of that approval still in, is every aspect of that approval still in play? Three, why encourage fast food restaurants when we are more, we are a more health-conscious community? Four, will this negatively impact the value of our homes? And five, what environmental and financial impact would the new gas station have on the upcoming hamlets and villages? And will that detract from any additional potential investments? That ends all public comments.
Thank you, Ms. White. The public comment period is, oh, I'm sorry, you have time for rebuttal. Please go ahead, my apologies.
I want to emphasize to the commission that this is a first step of many to construct this project that we believe will be a great asset to the City of Chattahoochee Hills. We started this project in 2018, there wasn't really a zoning code for this. We worked with the city, the Historic Crossroad District zoning was applied to this property. We've shown, I think over the years, that we are willing to build it in the vision that the city has within the criteria and the code that we're given as, as a property owner, as what we can do to that property. We come before you saying, okay, the code says this, the criteria, we've met this criteria. And we're only here to talk about special use permit. Down the road, we're going to talk about the land disturbance, the building, all those things where there'll be more city input and we'll have to get approvals for all the way it looks. The, the, if we, the liquor store, you've heard people talk about, that's down the road. And all we asking is let you, let's take this first step, this approval for this convenience store, so we can't, or gas station convenience store, so we can move down the path to building something that everybody would be happy with and we'll be proud of. I just wanted to briefly to talk about some of the comments. And, you know, and they don't, they're not really addressing the criteria with all due respect to the public. This is not the time for some of these issues, I'm sorry about it, thank you. I hate microphones, I apologize. The market plans and our requirement of getting a special use permit, the accountability of the city, I think it sees it on a wonderful job of trying to work with the community, work with developers, work with all the interested parties to get something that everyone likes and can appreciate. Alex has built lots of beautiful convenience store centers around the metro, and each of them he does differently. There was one in Midtown he built where, you know, they wanted a 40s 50 theme, he did that. He's done it up in Milton and Alpharetta all over. And each one is distinct to the community. I always harp on the Dumbledore one, the community, the city said, we don't want you to have beer and wine in that store. We want it to be more like a deli type of thing, so we made it that way. And that's what the community wanted, that's what happened. Because he recognizes that the community is who supports these, these facilities. And so we'd like a little faith in a sense to give us this first step so we can continue the project. If we can't get the special use permit, we really can't continue the project. So let us have this special use permit, we've met the criteria, we believe. We've outlined why, the city has outlined why. The only real objection with the criteria was the parking, which I think we've addressed to fix that issue and made it even better. We heard the input of the people, they don't, you know, people don't want the parking there. Cities like the parking there, we move it out. And so we asked for a vote of approval with the one provision that we take the parking out from all the storefronts except for behind the canopy. And we're happy to address any question you have, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The public comment period is closed. Mr. Morton, would you please provide staff's recommendation? And then I think we should also talk about the conditions you're proposing.
The staff, so the special use permit specifically. Staff recommendation was with a site modification to address the location of the parking, staff would recommend approval of the special use permit for the gas station. So the, the parking was the lingering issue and they seemed to address. I'd love to learn more about how, how that would look, how that would operate, but that was the staff's principal concern for these, for the special use permit specifically.
Right. And do we have any conditions for that other than that?
So there were none in the package. I've had conversations since and have some, I put together some things that we might want to consider. Actually, the first one, the first one comes from Public Works. And I, I'll... I'll hold off until you. Well, so I'll, I'll go ahead and start talking about the first one because it's, it's kind of lengthy. It has to do with, so you saw the analysis in the, in the memo, of course, about, about traffic and where traffic was likely to come from and where, what the entrances they would use, right? On Cascade-Palmetto Highway, which is not a city street, it's a City of South Fulton Street, they received in 2018 permission for right in, right out only. I would assume based on the traffic at the corner that that's all they would be able to get probably now as well. Conditions haven't gotten any easier in the traffic at the corner. So really, traffic can only come in from one direction in that entrance, which means that any traffic coming from the other three directions would have to use Church Street entrance, which is a city of Chattahoochee Hills Road. And there was concern, and then also exiting, similar concerns, right? Only, you know how difficult, if you'd seen the traffic, you know how difficult it would be to exit there. And so I think most of the cars would be exiting on Church Street or even in fact going down Fairburn-Campbellton Road, which is a road that runs in front of the lodge and the Baptist Church, down to that farther entrance that's across from the Boukart entrance, closer to the river. And so Public Works was understandably concerned about the condition of Church Street as it is and also about Fairburn-Campbellton Road. And so the first condition, if you, do you want me to just read through these now that everyone has them? Due to the arrangement of the three proposed entrances to the site, much of the traffic entering and exiting the site will use one of the Church Street entrances. The applicant will pay to improve the adjacent segment of Church Street, which is about 420 feet long, give or take by my measurement, to city standards in order to ensure that it can handle the increased traffic flow. Similarly, due to the frequent congestion at the corner of Campbellton-Fairburn Road and Cascade-Palmetta Highway, Fairburn-Campbellton Road, again, that's that small street that's in front of the lodge and the church, leading northwest past the lodge and the Baptist Church, may be preferred, maybe a preferred exit route for traffic headed onto Highway 92 in either direction and on a Cascade-Palmetta Highway headed north. The applicant will pay for the necessary improvements to Fairburn-Campbellton Road to ensure this route is safe for this traffic. Number two, no vehicle repair or maintenance shall be allowed in conjunction with the gas station. Number three is, actually, number three through six are all normal parts of the process and are really included here just to underscore that they, that they are a part of the process. The applicant will meet, will meet the open space requirement in the City's Unified Development Code. Again, they would need to even without the condition by using the off-site open space options in UDC Section 5-6. We don't have the numbers there. I don't know how much of the existing site qualifies as open space, but it's, we know it's not 70%. And so there are options in, already in the zoning in Section 5-6 for allowing open space to be, requirements to be met off-site. And in fact, specifically, as you, again, you saw in the memo, specifically in the historic crossroads, because of the unique nature of them compared to where we usually think of open space and hamlets and villages, up to 100% of the required open space is allowed to happen off-site, thinking that things in historic crossroads are coming right up to the street and they're on smaller lots and preservation on each individual lot wouldn't make sense. Moving it off-site actually makes more sense for the urban form that you're expecting in a historic crossroads. Number four, the project will undergo a formal review for compliance with the Metropolitan River Protection Act, MOPA, before any permits are issued on the site. Again, they did have a reevaluation in 2018, but there's a formal process. Again, that would happen before we issued any permits anyway. Number five, as a part of the land disturbance permit application, a post-development stormwater plan shall be included, demonstrating compliance with the stormwater requirements in the city's UDC and Chapter 14 of City Code. And that, it's in there, we don't see any stormwater features in their concept plan, which is understandable for a concept plan, right? We typically don't, but those will, will need to be evaluated as part of the development process. And then number six, the last one, as a part of the building permit application, a lighting plan will be included to demonstrate compliance with the city's night sky requirements in UDC Section 5-Night 19.
Thank you. I think we should move into discussion now, and that will include questions for the applicant if there are any. And as we do, we should do this under the context of a motion, but the motion will be to open up discussion. So is there a motion regarding this proposal to, for a special use permit for this location?
Just for clarification, this is not a motion for the concept plan. This is just for the special use.
Correct.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion.
No, no, it's a motion to approve.
Well, I don't.
No, no, it's a motion to approve. No, it's a motion to approve. And then, and then before we go, we'll, we'll discuss it before we vote.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
So right now, the motion makes no reference to conditions that'll be part of the discussion.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Make it a motion to approve as additionally, as a condition.
Oh, we're going to open the discussion?
Absolutely.
Yes. Motion to approve with conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Let's open it up for discussion.
So one of the things that I would like to discuss, when we look at the UDC and we look at Section 3.16 that was included in the package, when it talks about purpose of a special use permit, it basically states that it should be compatible to the use characteristics of a zoning district. So when we're to vote or when we're required to review the location, the design, and the impact on the public facility. And it also goes to state, if we go down to Section 5, that our decision or our recommendation should be based on the criteria in Section 3.14B, the use standards in Section 7.4, and also the consistency with the comp plan and the requirements of the zoning district. But that's where we get into the historical framework district. So it said, any recommendation that we make should be based on all those categories. So if we're making a recommendation, and let's just take the historical framework plan, we know that the current plan that he has is not in accordance with that. So even when we go to the criteria, and I guess the applicant was making reference that his plan meets all those criteria. So when you look at criteria number one, criteria number one talks about the proposed plan should be consistent with all of the requirement. It says all, all of the requirements of the zoning district. So we know that parking is an issue. So he made a couple of comments about parking, but we know that parking is an issue. So when we go to criteria number three, criteria number three talks about the traffic impact. It has been stated several times, if you go during rush hour, in the mornings, and in the evening, you can see the impact on traffic, not only on, not only on Route 154, also on 92, and also on Church Street. You see the impact there. We look at, criteria number six also talk about the proposed use as far as the volume of traffic that would be generated. So even though the applicant is saying that he meets all those criteria, but when you look at criteria number one, three, and six, in my opinion, in my opinion, that has not been met. So I think as the commission, one thing that we need to think about, there have been a lot of conversation about some of our sister communities and the warehouses that they have in their community. The question that I would like to ask my fellow commission members, do we, we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to build a historic town center here on this, on this plot of land, but do we want to be known as a city with gas stations? I know this is a special use permit for a gas station, so there's always conversation about our sister cities and the warehouses that they have in their community. So when people are driving into, in Chat Hills, do we want to be known as a city of gas stations, or do we want to be known as a city that has a nice historic town center and a historic zoning district?
Now, did the, on condition number one, because those are specifics, specific criteria, did the proposal to change parking, does that change? Does that address your concern?
So I guess it also talked about the parallel parking in the front, and it also talked about, when you look at the framework, it talks about in the alleyways also. So it did say parking should be, the framework does say parking should be in the back. Right. So I guess the applicant is saying he's gonna remove parking from the front?
Well, part of it. I think keeping the parking that's directly in front of the canopy is proposals to do that, so.
But I think when we look at the framework, let's look at it real fast. If we go to the framework, there's a chart in the framework. And it's, it talks about shared parking, and it says, shared parking should be located at the rear of the building. What page is it?
No, no, it's, it does say that in that, in that, in that plan. It is a question in my mind about whether that's a requirement of the zoning district, if that in fact is referring to the code as opposed to that, that particular framework that was passed in 2020. And it did pass in 2021, and it's a different, it's a changed circumstance from 2018.
Correct.
My question is on the parking, if all of the parking were to be moved to the back, would that address your concern on number one, or is there more on number one?
I think I have more. Let me go to it. Also, number one talks about location. So it talks about location, and number one also talks about design. So in my opinion, it talks about use. So then it says, use is proposed to be located, then it goes on to talk about the parking. So is the appropriate use for that particular site, is a gas station the appropriate use?
Well, but it's, is it consistent with the requirements of the zoning district in which that is proposed to be located? So it's, it's whether it's consistent with the zoning district.
Which is the community hamlet zoning district, which to me would.
It's a historic district, so.
Right.
It is, now, the historic district, well, even in that plan, I will point out that the, the maps in the plan, the figures in the plan show that as retail. And in fact, the zoning district, the historic zoning district does allow gas stations.
Right, which I'm not disputing.
So I'm not sure, one bit, I think you may be making a different point there, though. Will, did you want to?
Yeah, I mean, Charles, perhaps it could also be related to the scale, right? I mean, perhaps there is a gas station that would fit in the historic crossroads district, just not what's being proposed. We don't want a racetrack, no matter how much facade you put on it, right? It's, it's, that's a much bigger scale than what you were talking about.
Correct.
Charles, I'd like to add to that, and I'm looking at the historic crossroads district in the zoning. And number six, I don't have the top of the page, sorry. Prohibit or place reasonable controls on development of inappropriate large-scale, well, this isn't super large scale, highway-oriented retail. And I feel like this is highway-oriented. There really isn't a historic crossroads community outside of Mr. Hmm that lives there, behind there. So there's a couple of residents, not that there won't be more.
Correct.
But they're primarily servicing the highway-oriented, servicing the highway through traffic. Additionally, office dining uses that are tended to serve large areas of the city. So that, I think, feeds into why you may think it's inappropriate, I do too.
As far as the location, correct.
And actually, number seven and number eight also support that same mindset. You know, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry. Tiffany, yes. She brought up several good points, and was it Ms. Addison, right? Yeah, and, you know, she mentioned, she's not opposed necessarily to a gas station, but is that really what we want? And like the suggestion of, you know, maybe it was just bad judgment to put a liquor store on there and some potential fast food. We, we're intentionally different in Chat Hills, and I think that's the main point. And this is maybe a little bit different, but it's, it's not different in a, in a way that's unique. You know, you bring up ideas of like a welcome center. I don't know, you can't really tell people what to do, right? But I agree with what you're saying. My motion was just simply to move forward to get to discussion.
Right, right. I guess I want to be clear about one thing. I'm aware that the zoning allows for a gas station. So I was just asking my fellow commission members to consider, you know, do we want to be a city known as gas station over on the north side? Because, I mean, we always talk about the other communities, they're always building warehouses. So it could also be said by Chat Hills that we're also building gas stations. Because when you look at that corner that was pointed out by one of the letters that was read, it's going to be two gas stations on that corner, 154 and 92. So if you go a mile going, maybe two miles, three miles going south at the roundabout, there's also two gas stations.
In city of South Fulton.
Is that other one, the one on the right-hand side? We going south, the Sitco?
Across from?
Is, that's, that's Chat Hills. That's, that's South Fulton at that point also? Okay. Okay.
But still.
But still, yeah, but still. Yeah.
It's bookend, right?
Right. Just something to think about, just something to think about.
So from my perspective, it's hard to separate them and not talk about the phase two. If they don't get this special use, then they're not going to build the gas station. And the last council approved having the pumps in front of the gas station. So I feel like my hands are tied because I just, I looked at their other gas station, their BP, it's lovely, I see what they say, but the pumps in front totally obscure the buildings behind, so it doesn't matter how much effort you put into making them beautiful or historic, all you're going to see is the big pump and the, and the nice attractive roof. But my other, my other concern, which I just don't think I can get over, is just the amount of traffic. And until there's a roundabout, someone decides to pony up and put the money in and do a roundabout, it's only going to get worse. It's the only road that goes over the river, and there's more developments being built in Douglasville, and Boukart's development's going to happen. I don't even know how people are going to be able to access our Campbellton Park if you allow their traffic to run down Church Street and exit the far end of Campbellton Park. It just doesn't seem like that's activating the historic crossroad district in the intent that we designed this. So that's why I'm leaning towards not approving this.
I can ask the applicant, what is, what is your perspective on traffic there?
A good thing, it means business.
There's always too much traffic in my perspective. I don't really know how to answer your question. I mean, the.
Microphone, please.
I don't know what that study is. I think, I think, I think what Alex is trying to say is that he does a lot of BP stations. BP does a lot of work through their jobbers and through the corporate to figure it out. And basically, what the BP study, I've not read it, but it in detail, but basically what it's saying is that gas station traffic is, comes from traffic's always coming there. In other words, people aren't going to drive from Douglasville to go to this gas station. The people that are going to the gas station, all they're driving by the gas station. So I think that's, that's sort of my answer. You know, the city suggests some conditions. I don't know if that's what you're asking me about the conditions.
No, 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 it was, it was, this is one of the highest traffic, maybe the highest traffic count in the area, and just was interested in your perspective on whether or not that was going to be a problem for you all or a benefit.
I mean, more traffic helps people. But again, you know, the, the traffic that comes to the gas station, the people are already driving by the gas station. So I don't think it necessarily adds a lot of traffic, but people differ on that. People differ on that.
Thank you for that answer, Mike.
I don't think that's true for Church Street.
Right, right.
I mean, I think that's the, it has nothing to do with the traffic on 92. It's the traffic that this creates at that intersection that is solely the result of the way this is designed and, and what else could be done, what other plans could be brought forward that perhaps the highest and best use for that particular corner is a traffic circle, I don't know, but I, I, this thing is not gonna be good for traffic.
Well, I was curious you say that, because in the, in the framework plan, there's actually a section about 170 or so that actually shows some pictures of that, of that circle. And it talks about it as being one of the most critical intersections for that concept, for that framework. And it shows a traffic circle. And that being said, I'm not sure we have a developer out there that's preparing to redevelop the Hamilton Historic District at all. I don't think we have one, and I don't think there's been one. And so what we have in front of us is a request for a special use permit for the variance that's been granted for putting a gas station on the corner. And so that's what's before us, I think. So what we would like it to be, and what the cities of South Fulton and the city of Chattahoochee, I don't know if South Fulton ever adopted that framework plan, I just don't. But, but the, the city of Chattahoochee Hills did.
Chattahoochee Hills did, right. South Fulton was involved in putting it together, but I don't know if their council acted or not.
Adopted it, but that is, that is an aspirational view of what that historic district could be. And so unfortunately, that's aspirational.
It's aspirational that this proposed plan cuts off the chance of that happening, right?
Well, I'm not so sure about that, I'm not sure it cuts it off. I think that might be going a bit too far. But that's not, I think, and I know that's what everyone's fear is, but I'm not exactly sure why this gas station would prevent the rest of the development of that historic district, but--
I think one thing that was brought out at the community meetings, a lot of comments were made where the community was asking the applicant to, to work with, so-called work with, with the community. Meaning, meaning, it's, we know that the code allows for a gas station. We know that he has a variance. However, if, if community input is gathered, would the applicant be willing, even though he has a variance, would he be willing to put the pumps in the back and then whatever town center or retail center that he develops, that he maintains that historic, historic framework? So.
I'd like to add on to that, maybe, can we make that a condition of the special use permit? Even though the variance is already approved?
We're recommending, we're making recommendations, we can make--
So we make that a recommendation?
We can make recommendations, but let's, let's hear from the applicant, I think. Restate what you said.
So basically, what I was saying, based on the community meeting and community, it's obvious the community wants to provide input. So, and it's obvious that the applicant wants to have a, a gas station. So even though the applicant has a variance, would the applicant be willing to, to keep that historic framework? And as far as the variance, place the pumps in the back instead of the pumps being in the front of his site?
Are you, if you're prepared to answer that?
We had this discussion already, Commissioner Hayes, the other day, and it just won't work. I mean, the applicant runs gas stations all over the metro, and this does not work. This is why we explained we wanted the variance last time. All due respect, we have a protected right for that variance, a protected right to develop that way. And I would respectfully submit, as a lawyer, for a second, that conditioning such a thing on us walking away from that variance would be very inappropriate.
Well, thank you.
You know, I know you're gonna differ my, my opinion, but that's perfectly acceptable, happens all the time.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's not for this moment, but thank you.
But no, unfortunately, we couldn't do it that way, it just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. It, there have been changed conditions since 2018. There's more residential out there. There is a 2021 framework plan that has been passed and adopted. And so I think it is, it is within the commission's recommend, it can be within the conditions recommend, commission's recommendation about what it would like to see there in terms of the, the location of the pumps. Now, it is in a contravention of the variance, but it is a recommendation to the city council for their consideration. So would you like to make an amendment to the motion? There's a motion on the table for approval, it's been seconded, conditional approval. Do you want to make an additional condition?
Yes, I would like to add an additional condition that we recommend to city council that, that the pumps be placed to the back of the retail center, town center, instead of in the front, so to speak.
Okay.
But Mike--
Is there a second, is there a second to that motion to amend the motion? I'll second it.
You go ahead. And I just see that that's a problem, because like he said, they've already been granted that variance. I see the only way to not have those pumps in front is to not vote on the special use permit. I don't see how you can make a condition for something that's already been approved, because that still stands with the land. I just maybe don't understand.
I guess another thing that, I mean, not to belabor the point, but another thing that, to me, which I don't really quite understand. Okay, we know the variance was granted in 2018. We know this special use permit was granted in 2018. And like I said in the work session, what I don't understand is, how can you have an indefinite variance? To me, to me, if, if the special use expired, then to me, it would make sense that that variance should also expire, because the applicant never came in for a building permit. So to me, that seems to be a loophole in the code. And since city council is currently revising the UDC, I think that's, that's a loophole, to me, that really should be closed.
Well, and perhaps that's not, and that legal question is an interesting legal question. There is no code provision that, like there is for the special use permit or the concept plan that, that does expire at a set time. But your point is interesting, and I'm not sure we can answer that or should even try to answer that right now. That would be something for the city attorney, I would think. But it's not a crazy position, whether it's right or wrong, I don't know. We have a motion on the floor and a second to amend the primary motion, which would be to add, recommend to the city that they, that they add a condition that the pump station be moved to the back for purposes of approval of the special use permit. We've had some discussion on, is there other discussion, or should we vote on that motion?
I mean, we can make it to say that the gas station conforms to section 7.1, uses and definitions, subsection 8, all fueling stations shall be located to the rear of the structure and to be shielded from the adjacent road by the structure and shall be located as, to limit visibility from any adjacent thoroughfare to the greatest possible degree.
As a person who made the motion, do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, again, Ms. Searle makes the correct observation that this is, does contravene the variance that was granted. But then again, we're not contravening it, we're making a recommendation to city council, so.
They'll contravene it.
So just--
That may be, right.
We don't know.
So just a question, so even though we have the motion on the floor, but it doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from still voting on the special use? Meaning, if, if we want to approve or deny, we could still approve or deny?
Well, yes, we haven't come to that primary motion yet.
I think Laura was asking--
You've tied them together, because the initial motion is to approve the special use, and you've added amendment to that to include, right? That's what you--
But we're voting on whether to accept that amendment.
So you've amended the initial motion to approve the special use?
But then we'll vote on that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but then we'll still vote on it.
Yeah.
Right.
May I ask, before you vote on the amendment, part of the, the reference in there, as, as John read, was just talking about shielding visibility of the use of the pumps as much as possible. Is visibility as much of an issue? In other words, I think visibility is his biggest concern, and he might not be interested in doing it if it's not upfront, I can't answer for him. But is there a question of visibility if there were sightlines available to those pumps, right? Designed specifically so that you could see back into the site? Is that, it might give him a little more ability to feel like he can do it, even with that condition?
I don't think that would be a problem, yeah.
Okay, so I would suggest amending it to strike that sentence or whatever from the, from that provision where it talks about shielding the visibility.
I suppose there's a middle ground possibility where one would move the, move, instead of moving it entirely behind, that you would move it to one side. And so it would only front on, instead of fronting on the two main intersections, it possibly would front on one of the sides instead. But that's not been proposed, so. Well, should we vote on the amendment to the motion?
Okay.
All in favor of the motion proposed by Charles and amended by John to add that--
As a recommendation.
As a condition to the primary motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. So we have, the motion carries, and the motion to amend the motion carries. So would you, shall we talk? Is there more discussion that people would like to have for the primary motion, which John is to, is to approve the special use permit as amended? Sure.
Point of order, can we get a count on that?
Four.
Forty-two, it was forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
Doug and I voted no.
And, and--
Oh.
Oh, you voted no, too.
I didn't see that, sorry.
Three, three.
It's three, three.
So three, three, and it doesn't carry. When there's a tie, it doesn't carry.
Doesn't carry, so it, I think same, my apologies, I thought, I didn't see your vote.
Yeah.
Will. So it doesn't carry. So we're back to the main motion, which is to, whether or not to approve the, or recommend approval of the special use permit as conditioned. Not that condition, not the condition around back. Is there a, is there further discussion at this point?
I think just a quick statement, and I mean, I think the reason I didn't feel like I needed to vote for that is I think it's, you know, well within the city's right, our right to recommend, and the city's right to not approve this special use permit. And without this special use permit, all they have is the variance to put pumps in the front for a gas station they can't build. And so they do have that right, we don't want to deny them that right. But I think we'd better off forwarding this to the city council.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
Well, let's then bring it to a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the special use permit as amended, as conditioned, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Five to one, it does not carry. Now, I think that probably moots the new business item on the concept plan. But we, anyway, the, the public hearing is closed. It, shall we move to the concept plan? I don't think there's any vote to be had there, actually. Mike, your recommendation is not to approve, is that correct, on the concept plan?
Right, so, yes, because of the parking, and so with their provocation amendment, that might satisfy. I'd love to see more information on how exactly that would work.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and vote on it. Is there a motion regarding the concept plan?
Motion to recommend denial?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. That was new business, we jumped over old business, but there's none posted. Mike, I'm not sure if you have staff report.
You discussed something I can't--
Yeah.
There was something I was gonna mention.
The Buchardt plan coming up, is that it?
So, yeah, so, yeah. So the Buchard application is coming up. I think we'll see it on the calendar in July. That's what I'm expecting, probably first read beginning of July, July planning commission meeting. That's--
That's, yeah. So we're at the point of adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ending adjourn.